So you wanna go ahead and read the meeting notice?
Yes. Notice the public nurse, please take notice that an application has been made by Patrick Paulino, Matthew Construction Company, nine twenty tenth Avenue North on Alaska, Wisconsin for conditional use from then to a temporary by construction plan. The mineral extraction from the shoreline is through section twenty-two. Something used to subsea before, major project on the following premises for part of the southeast quarter, the southwest quarter, section sixteen, township one oh two, range five, Houston County, Minnesota, parcel I E zero nine zero one six four zero two zero. Said applicant standing making application is as the owner of said described lands. The hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Conditioners, City of Caladon, Minnesota, at five P M on Thursday, May nineteen twenty-two. All persons having an interest in the matter may be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying said application. Comments should be mailed through the Environmental Services Department, three oh four South Marshall Street, Caladon, Minnesota, five five one two one, and emailed to Martin at C O dot Houston dot command dot U S, and must be received by Tuesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-two. Similar guidance issued by the state will be part of your public record and will be made available by or reviewed by the funding commission.
You wanna just present it, Sam?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on, yeah.
I do have some things on that. So you guys had some additional information up there. Patrick was working with on this, provided some, uh, in response to some comments or questions in the D N R, we provided this package for you guys, so got it there, and then there's, uh, all proposed conditions are taken well. Uh, I guess I just wanna remind you, like, the, we already went through the interviews, which was what was required for, uh, this, at the, a temporary two minutes plan in the Ag District. But when we updated our shoreline ordinance in twenty eighteen, um, to follow our based upon the state's model ordinance, industrial uses are actually listed as a conditional use. And so that was discovered during the hearing, or introver's hearing last month, um, which is why we're here today, then. So the conditional use permit today is only in regards to the industrial use in the shoreline overlay district. So, and then, uh, there is some, it's a problem that, uh, the scale hasn't already, already exists there. As part of the quarry operation are considered illegal non-conforming, so they won't, uh, allow the setbacks and stuff that we're discussing today. Won't apply to those buildings. I think that was about it.
So you guys understand, uh, that we set the map that shows where we propose to block the asphalt plant, right? On that map was that back, the edge of that stream. And according to what we've been given the shoreline permit, our plant needs to sit outside of that bomb. Why would this permit? That's the first, first thing which we would, we can absolutely do. We can sit outside the one hundred foot shoreline. Other conditions. As far as the asphalt plant itself, we have our M P C A permit for the asphalt plant that we have to follow for stormwater. So we have that permit already that goes with all our asphalt plants in this one, so we have an update permit there.
Well, so, the question is, so, are we?
Can you stop, man?
Yeah.
Can you say your names for our recorder?
Same, that's good, Matty Construction.
And Samantha Castor, Matty Construction.
Thank you.
So, looking at the proposed, um, C U P conditions that we just got today, um, we had some concerns about, um, some of these quotes, conditions, based on our M P C A permit that we have to have. That permit is fluid based on water sampling. If we need to change B M Ps to follow those water sample results to fix any possible exceedances, we need to be able to have the fluidity to change those things, and we have an engineer and geologist on staff that will, um, change those B M Ps as needed. So I'm, we hesitate to put conditions in place that will dictate to those B M Ps, when we may need to change them based on our non-metallic mining and associated activities permit for stormwater.
So which number specifically are you looking at here?
Um, so it would be, well, so it's number three, it says all the, all the runoff within the plant footprint must stay contained within the existing quarry floor. Our permit allows for discharge of stormwater for asphalt plant. So, like, you talked, it's, it's not, uh, we can burn around it, the plant temporarily to keep that water there, if that's what you require. Um, but we have a permit that allows for discharge of stormwater to a trout stream. Specifically, our existing permit.
For the site.
Well, our existing stormwater permit with M P C A allows for discharge to a trout stream from an asphalt plant with B M Ps in place, obviously.
So you'd have to discharge it slowly or whatever.
Yes, yep, we have, yep, we have some sedimentation bases that allows for slowdowns and ripract, uh, you know, also slow it down.
I think by the way before that, that all the water had to stay in the quarry floor too, but do you remember the last one?
I wanna say that was actually, I pulled up part of the term.
And that's fine, I can do that.
But it's, I can see where, you know, if, if they allow it, it's probably better to get it out of there.
We have to do sampling, water samples every year to make sure we are within our, our limits.
Okay.
I mean, if, I guess we change the verbage that we actually close to say. Treated, filtered.
M P C A, M P C A compliance or something.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
That, that would probably take her.
So water discharge.
Cause I'm sure they kinda watch it pretty carefully.
So, I mean, we're looking at discharge units are
It's, it's, uh, yeah, total suspended solids.
Probably, you do a little bit of metal analysis.
No, it's, it's suspended solids because of, um, the trout habitat, to keep down the turbidity in the, in the stream.
Temperature.
Um, we don't have a, a temperature regulation, but there is, um, our B M Ps have to, that we're required to use certain B M Ps so that we don't increase the temperature.
Alright, well, yeah, I mean, we can certainly, we could certainly revise it to say shall, shall be in accordance with and, and give you a permit number.
Yep, that's really bad.
We'll, we'll get your actual number in accordance with these.
Yep.
Anybody else in favor of that idea?
So I don't think we can completely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
We can also modify that, the interim permit has not gone to more officials yet either. So, like I said, I think that language was in that permit as well, so we can propose to them to.
Make them both the same, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they can change anything on the permit as they review it.
Yeah.
Is there another number on here that was kind of a concern?
Uh, so then it would be like number nine, where it says put in that specific burn, and number ten, put in that specific burn. Um, ten, we already have a shallow burn placed there. That's why there's a little blue spot for water holding area, cause it sits there and infiltrates, and it's, there's not a lot of water that goes to that location. But again, our B M Ps, we need to be able to change them at any time based on our permit. So that specifically would be hard to put those in place, especially if we need to change our discharge location and what river I've been or other items in there.
Well, could you kinda get together with Martin and figure out how you wanna put that in there?
Again, I'm not, not against that. Part of this is, we got the stuff.
Oh, I got it twenty minutes ago, so you're ahead of me. Yeah, no, I gotcha. We appreciate that, isn't it?
And ultimately, I don't think that, the D N R doesn't have an issue with this site, it's just that this is being, it's a C P, it's the one chance for them to express their concerns. And so that's, uh, that, that's what these came out as just.
So the D, the D N R sent you this stuff?
Yeah.
The D N R, this is kinda from them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not all, but the, the recent issues.
Yeah, I mean, a couple are our standard ones. And the colorized ones were the, the ones of the suggestion that you have.
So basically, we can decide how to interpret both things and, and adjust it too, right?
Yeah, yeah, ultimately, such as.
Yeah, yeah.
And we can certainly, I guess, while we were talking, we were going to show up, there's sort of two ways to reduce that. You can do it based on your management standards, or you can just give somebody the discharge of that.
And then, I imagine they kinda already have that discharge limit in place.
Yeah, yeah.
That's exactly what you're saying.
Yeah.
By virtue of that, then we have to do other things.
Sure.
It's very common for like a waste water or air, something like that. You give them these limits, but they don't get a lot more specific, when it's like a single constituent, which in this case it's, um, it's a fish, it wasn't so much, so there's metals or salt and so on, and these other. Start to get that evolved out, suddenly it's have to get restricted and discharge.
Sure.
So this one's fairly strict. But, but it's a source that they want to be careful of as a trout stream, so.
Then the fine tuning can kind of be left up, figure that out.
Yeah.
So number four, they're asking for an elevation survey, well, you've got a map all laid out with a certain elevation survey already, don't you?
This is our, so one is in front of you, is our data from our flyovers. And so.
Yeah, so, um, my question is, for this specific one, um, we talk about the floodplain. And I wanna make sure that it's, you know, the, you know, regular high watermark and not the hundred year flood that we're looking at for comparisons.
Is that a number on the conditions or where are you at?
Um, number four, so it's the survey part, which we can definitely give you a drone survey of the site.
I think what we're after is current conditions.
Yeah.
We, that's, you know, I mean, granted, there don't be a lot of activity there, but even still, there's a basis for, you know, it isn't so much that we're imposing additional restrictions. It is in the sense that these are current conditions and the things we want to change.
Yeah, and, and it will, because again, our permit, so if we need to put more berman in, we need to put more ripract in, that'll be dictated based on our water sampling. Um, but we can definitely, we have a drone that we do drone surveys with, so we can definitely, that could be something we do.
We can get a current conditions elevation report. An elevation map.
Yeah, I mean, it's basically, in some program, if you call it existing conditions, that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's basically. Yeah, and we can get that, so.
That, that doesn't mean we won't use it throughout the place.
The purpose of that, I guess, can give some background on it, so, as you can see in the map, the blue shading is the floodplain, and so it appears that they're out of, that's the mo. And then it appears that they are out of the female floodplain, but looking at our light R video, it's uncertain as whether the quarry floor actually is. And then, uh, our floodplain regulations dictate that anything that's placed within floodplain, granted, a lot of this is role worthy. Uh, but like there are to bring in other structures, uh, which aren't necessarily but, again, it's a C U P, so, uh, just on a corporate basis. Uh, and so if anything, if structure comes in, uh, that would have to meet the state requirement, which is actually a little bit higher standard at one of the happening above that baseline elevation. And so the thought with, with asking for the surveys to actually see when our baseline given is here, so we can make a determination for future.
So this, so this, the asphalt plant itself can't be set below the floodplain, is that where we're going with this?
Uh, they so the, the ordinance requires that any structures be that the language of five is from the ordinance. That any, anything be adequately anchored to prevent flotation flat slatterment. But in conversations with Matthew and maybe Mark can attest to this, a lot of the equipment you're dealing with is, is role worthy if there was ever a need, and also.
Yeah, it's all portable. The only thing that's not portable is stock files.
Okay, in case it was a flood, you could do something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The plant can be broken down in four hours at the most.
Yeah, to, just to move the plant out of the floodplain, it would take us six hours.
Yeah.
So.
That's the whole thing.
Pretty good chances not gonna be an issue.
No, I wouldn't say so.
Yeah. So that would be, as far as the C U P conditions for number five, the verbiage of adequate.
We can change that to, or
Or portable.
Or transportable.
Transportable, or just because we don't really have a way to stake the stuff to the ground, or, or, you know.
We'd have to put in.
Tie it down or anything like that.
You wouldn't want to.
No.
No.
I don't imagine most of the stuff would flow.
No.
I don't think so, but.
No.
Even if you were trying to anchor, trying to anchor into some of that, it may not work for you, like, is it just for action?
Yeah, and I don't know why you wanna.
It's that epoxy.
Yeah. When we think of it, just as.
And if we thought, for any reason, it was gonna flood, it would be in our interest.
Yes.
We definitely want our.
So you change that around a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, that was.
And I mean, that's I see something that it's gonna be addressed in the ordinance where you, if you just wanted to.
So you'd kinda like to see number nine just wrapped into something else, probably into the M P C A plan, basically? Cause it draws here to construct a third burn.
Yeah.
And you're kinda saying that by the plan, you'd have to sort of.
Like, and, and we can put a burn in there, but I can't say it'll stay there forever. Based on if we do reclamation and we're moving out of that location and we're moving driveway, you know? I can't say that it'll always be there.
Yep, so it's flexible, but you still have to follow the M P C A.
Yes, yep, at the end of the day, we have to.
Everybody satisfied with change matter on a little bit too?
And there's also conservation easement that dictates their ability to place refractive places.
Yeah.
With short notice.
Yeah, we were actually looking at this. Um, um, condition number one, we were thinking, the permit shall comply with federal, state, local laws, rules.
Yep. Yep, you're fine. I don't know how you wanna address number six, because that also falls within the M P C A permitting.
We, you have, um, that's conditions in the other ones, which you provide that information to the D N R.
Uh, no.
Or you have a permit.
So we have a, a stormwater pollution prevention plan that.
And that has criteria that says, like, you're at, say, one third of your water currently.
So that's in the M P C A permit that you, you know, once you are at fifty percent capacity, you have to clean, I have to look it up to get the exact.
Okay, well, that's what I'm getting at.
I guess, I guess my thought is if the M P C A is already regulating you, we're okay with it.
We can cross reference.
And I don't, don't think we need to really follow it too much, because I think they're gonna pay attention pretty good.
Yep, we have.
Does that make sense?
Stormwater pollution prevention plan that they also, we have to have.
If we just tell you that you're gonna, or including that you're gonna follow M P C A plan, I don't think we need to worry too much about another condition. If that's okay with everybody.
I agree.
I was kinda gonna say the same thing. So are there any other questions for the applicants from you guys here? How long is the plant gonna be in there? All summer?
No, hopefully, uh, one month.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're going to get in and get out of there.
That's the idea.
Yeah.
So we, not very, not extremely long term.
Yep.
But with this one, this, this does cover you for more.
Yeah, that interview is for this, this year, and that will expire on the December. Um, and then, but this particular C P that you guys are, you're in tonight, will cover any future asphalt plants now, that looks like they've been in there for three years or so, which depends upon the graphics in the area. So, this is a one-time deal, but then they'll still be required to get any interviews or zoning or whatever is required at that point. And then annual basis.
Okay, sound good. See no members of the public here, and you, you no comments, right?
Um, just the comments that were submitted in your packet, and then, um, I guess the proposed conditions, we consider kind of last. From the D N R, I believe that one, but all the names of D N R to treatment.
I think seven later also covered in the permits, I don't know how you wanna address all those. Barrier they're talking about in seven are their concrete J barriers currently. And the inlet is for a water diversion, stormwater diversion from the property across the road and up the county road thirty-two. So that it doesn't run across the site, it goes under into the stream versus dealing with our stormwater.
I disagree, some of these were the cover basis because we didn't know some of the specific practices that were in place. And then, uh, well, the well, a lot of this is always addressed, and there's a lot of assumptions that all these are taking, getting taken care of by other agencies. And so, uh, the D N R was thought that, and you never know what, they have nothing to do with.
I, I understand.
Um, and so that's why they brought these forward, so.
Yeah, I mean, realize we're dealing with this context of use.
Yep, yep, yep.
Well, for no further questions, I guess we can just kinda proceed to the findings. Yep, if you guys are comfortable there, you can stay right there, you don't have to move back or whatever. Oh, they're doing that, everybody changed up the minutes from last meeting. So we'll make a motion to approve those, nurse. Move, second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of approving last month's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve the minutes. I'll make a motion to be bypassed, number five, number thirteen of the findings, is there not applicable?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Findings that, number one, that's a proposed use conforms to the county land use plan. Uh, staff analysis that the county land use plan should encourage the development of a transportation system which properly balances considerations of safety, accessibility, environmental protection, and cost.
All those in favor of the staff analysis of number one, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates the need for the proposed use. Matthew utilizes the gangway for every few years as a temporary asphalt plant to complete local infrastructure projects. The location that has historically been used is within the shoreline overlay district.
All those in favor of the staff analysis of number two, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county. Matthew Construction Asphalt Plants have a spill prevention control countermeasure plan in place in accordance with forty C S R, parts, part one twelve, so far as A and B, and a stormwater pollution prevention plan filed M P C A. Standard precautions required by state and federal law will be followed, and operators receive specialized training for spill response. Terms and barriers and various forms of filtration will be used to manage stormwater from asphalt plant area. In addition, regular stream monitoring takes place due to the stream easement and has not identified major natural hazards.
All those in favor of the staff analysis of number three, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Or the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Staff analysis says that this use should not affect quantity of water runoff and burns will contain runoff within the existing quarry site.
All those that, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, we already, we kind of discussed, uh, there will be flow containment, so. We'll say that, I mean, do we, are you guys open to modifying the findings?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So you'll take care of that, but we're basically gonna modify it so they can release some.
Yeah, this use should not affect water, water quantity, or quantity of water runoff, and stormwater discharge will be monitored.
To comply with M P C A.
Yeah. And if, yeah. Discharge limits.
So all those in favor of that modification to number four, in the staff analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five is not applicable, so six, that potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that standards have been met. Staff analysis is all water that hits the quarry floor is contained within the quarry, and stormwater pollution prevention plans have been filed for the site to prevent on-point source pollution. Um, we'll say all, all water that hits quarry floor is monitor, has, monitor discharge.
Well, I was gonna say, it's, uh, well, it's monitored.
The, the first.
Probably trees.
The first sentence, all we need to do is just take, is contained within the quarry or released according to M P C A standards. Okay?
Yeah. In case of release.
Should we make a motion to change that? Do we need to?
Well, when you motion on the findings at the end, we'll motion.
Okay. The changes, that's true. Right, so everybody that agrees with the staff analysis and the change on number six, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Seven, the adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or being provided. Analysis is that a portable sanitary, portable sanitary facilities and dumpsters with solid waste are used and serviced and needed for the duration of the project. This proposal does not include constructing new access roads. And the existing access road is considered non-conforming and cannot be modified without being, being in floodplain and shore standards. Equipment is required to be necessary, except for standing and equal to the apartment.
Everybody that agrees with the staff analysis of number seven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Curious?
Eight, the adequate measures found on or will be taken to provide sufficient off suite parking and loading spaces for post-use. Analysis sends their adequate space up in the course, but, but transport those use and floodplain elevation requirements and shore setback.
All those that agree with the staff analysis of number eight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nine, the facilities are provided to eliminate any traffic congestion or traffic hazard which favors well from the proposed use. Analysis states that for past projects, increased traffic loading haul routes utilized is not projected to impact traffic in significant help. No new access roads will be constructed with this proposal, and existing roads are considered non-conforming.
All those that agree with the staff analysis of number nine, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ten, that the conditional use will not be in risk, the use and enjoyment of other property in the needed vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Analysis states that the proposed use will not be more intrusive than the underlying use of the property. There is a D N R aquatic management area, conservationist, and drying through the quarry, and the purpose of the shoreline district is to protect the environment to more quality. As discussed previously, current S P C C and SWIPs, um, the pollution control plan, air prevention plan, and then this, uh, stormwater prevention plans and are in place for the underlying operation, which will address and join the main injuries to lives.
Everybody that agrees with the staff analysis of number ten? Everybody that agrees with the staff analysis of number ten, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Eleven, that the establishment of the conditional use will not be the normal and orderly development to improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Uh, analysis states that underlying operation is an aggregate quarry within the agricultural protection district. There is no proposed change to that operation. The CFP is for the temporary between this operation to be placed within the shoreline overly district that function out of the site every few years. The establishment of the CFP will not change the underlying operation and will allow the continued operation of a temporary use that has historically been allowed in this location.
All those that agree with the staff analysis of number eleven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Twelve, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control from some odor fumes, dust, noise and vibration. So that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control light and size and other light congestion managed to disturb its favorite properties and result. The analysis states that the applicant identifies intent to reduce asphalt odor with odor suppressant and control budget of dust and water. The measures proposed mitigate potential nuisances to make some practical and erratic given the relative device relatively isolated locations displayed.
One thing, is there anything about hours of operation anywhere in this?
Not in this particular permit, um, usually we. Discuss them in the interim permits, but I don't know that we put it, you're dictating at specific times within the conditions of the interim.
You guys pretty much run normal hours anyway, don't you?
Run light to dark.
It was, I want to say seven.
It'll be early as far as actually. Plan running, you like to dark.
Okay.
But we may be running a lower. Things of that nature after dark.
Do we need them in there or?
For.
I think as long as it's covered by the interim, interim permit that we would need to cover. Did we bring it up with the interim permit?
Um. Usually it's included in their application packet, so we addressed that in the board packet, but I don't know that. We ever put specific conditions on that or addresses specifically the conditions. Um, I think just probably. It would be a better spot to address that on now.
This is.
On the individual basis.
Yeah, because that's just for the project.
Yeah.
But, yes.
I'm, well, we, I don't, we have the interim use. Does that, that need the place?
Maybe just put that in there like dark or, or, you know. Five thirty A into. Nine thirty, I guess.
I don't even think you were that.
Is there anything in that specifically? That's in certain cases where we do have to do maintenance. Or we have problems.
Might have to run after hours.
Run after hours.
You know, to me, it doesn't make any dang difference at all because if it's gotta be done, it's gotta be done. You know, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, if there's times where we'll work to one AM if we, if we think we can run in the morning.
If you can get sound fixed.
Yep.
Maybe just leave it. It's only a concern for nuisance for neighbors and.
And there are, yeah, and there's the closest neighbor is, uh.
Maybe just better off leave it out of there.
But in this, in the interviews packet, they did identify that the plant would operate on a Saturday.
Plant operations.
Yeah.
Done for plants.
Sure.
Yeah.
Just leave, you're talking about repairs until one AM.
If we have to, if we have to repairs itself, that's, that's not running.
I wouldn't consider that.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be really an issue anymore.
By virtue of that we part of the application. That was incorporated by reference.
Okay, so it's already in there then. Okay. So back to the ranch here to run number. No, I, I brought that up and.
Okay.
So you already read through it. So all those in favor of number twelve's staff analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thirteen was not applicable. Uh, fourteen, that the intensity of any proposed commercial or industrial development is not greater than the intensity of the surrounding uses or not greater than the intensity characteristic of the. The zoning district. Analysis states that this temporary facility should not have an impact greater than the operating area of the quarrying which it will be held.
All those that agree with the staff analysis of number fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Fifteen, that the site specific conditions and that other conditions are established that require perfection of the public health safety morals in general. The skill prevention control countermeasure plan mitigates unforeseen threats to public health safety laws and general welfare to extend practical. The proposed power loss results in minimum wear on public road infrastructure thus protecting general welfare. Additionally, the applicant's previous work and company has been conducted as presented and.
All those that agree with the staff analysis of number fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then. We have a motion to approve the findings of fact.
I'll make a motion that we approve the finding and facts as presented.
A second.
I'll second.
As presented is probably. It's not this, but as.
As modified.
Yeah.
And we have a second?
I did.
Okay, and then, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Sorry.
Aye. Any opposed? Findings go. Then, uh, is there a motion to, uh. Recommend approval of the.
We go through the conditions more for just to make sure we're on the. We got everything. So one, uh, the permit each of the five was off that a state and local law and regulations, including the DNR consecration. Um, two is as presented. They, uh, runoff from within the flat footprint shall be in points with discharge limits on MND forty-nine.
Yeah, so MND forty-nine, our specific permit is. Zero. Um, in the packet, eighty cents, so MND forty-nine zero zero eight.
Or we were. Doing as presented. On your sheet.
Or number four?
Yeah.
We'll do it, we will provide a roll flight survey.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Number four, we're just, you got two number four, Jim.
Oh, uh, so I'm going, I guess I'm reading off of the one that you said.
Oh, alright.
I'll read it here, being at one and providing in the.
Alright.
So four, the survey shall be provided verifying elevations of the same quarry floor in relation to the mass blood plane elevations. The survey shall show elevations of the quarry floor, including the low areas of the quarry near. The riverbed filtration basin and the top of the burns along perfect week. This will provide a baseline for the site and future between this plant requests.
Yeah. And, yeah, the burns, yeah, and the burns could change, that's the only thing I wanna say there, but, yeah.
And also five. You guys decided to.
I don't think it's really necessary.
Instead of saying it's anchored, can't we just say it's mobile?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that make more sense?
Or we can acquire structures to be removed. Or maybe just delete it. But, okay, well, electrical.
So.
You don't have, you don't have.
No, it's, it's the generator, so we, we would definitely want to remove that if it's going flood.
And that's on a trailer?
Yes.
On a trailer, yeah.
Just put all, all, uh, structures will be portable and movable in case of flood.
That makes sense.
Be done with it, okay there, buddy?
Yep, sure.
So all structures shall be.
Portable and removed in case of.
All swept in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, six, then, remind details of zoning offers and how to correct filtration basin functions within one month of issuance. Including a made in schedule for when the seven four makes those with product. What have you guys decided on that one?
Was it six, seven, eight, nine, ten, all we're getting asked for the permit?
Yeah, they're all under.
Yeah.
That exists.
Yeah.
You say anything about that in here at all? I mean, you're gonna have to follow it anyway.
Yes, absolutely, yes. Well, number one does require that you comply with.
All the agencies. So like you say, just to.
Condition to follow the MPCA permits.
Everybody's okay with Josh's suggestion of taking six, seven, eight, nine out? And just modifying number one to a bit.
Uh, intent, I think.
That's right, there's another one.
We're adding numbers, we need to have that language like house, like this, we can't just set that in later, so.
What's that now?
Uh, you, you mentioned stuff supplying permit numbers, but we have to have that so that they can know about that. We can't just ask.
Can we just say federal, state, local laws, regulations? I was gonna say the easement and the permit.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and it's part of your state requirements, MPA permit.
Everybody's okay with taking out six, two, ten, right? Yeah, I think they're all redundant. That seems like it, because it's all kind of included in number one.
Right, yeah.
We need to vote on that.
Um, well, I think we'll vote on it here. Yeah. Or vote on it as the one second motion to not. I don't know if we talked about eleven at all, but the purpose of that one. Is that normally when people come with conditional use permits, they have that plan in place on how they're gonna lay everything out. And so the big thing Pat wanted to make known is he provided in the, the package that you guys got tonight. That, that's the layout for this plan that's at now, but that changes.
Yeah, so it's, it's a sample of how we normally set this plan, but the design space confines, it might have to get rearranged a little. Uh, we can change the angle of some of our different pieces so that it fits in the space.
And so just to cover. Fact that we don't, it won't be anything that would require. A new or amended permit, uh, but we just asked that they provide if it's gonna differ greatly from what is in this plan. That they just provide, that kind of staff and staff will get it administratively, so that's where eleven came from.
So number eleven, just moved up to number, we'll call it number seven.
Oh, yeah.
Or number six, you know, it's a six.
And that would be. As required with interviews. With the interviews process.
Are we all clear enough on the conditions before we jumbled up numbers and stuff? Let's have a motion to approve the conditions here to just make sure we know.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditions.
Second? Second, all those in favor of approving the conditions as modified, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So now we'll go to, um, asking for a motion to recommend approval now.
One thing I just want to clarify. Because it was advertises both, uh, where they industrial use mineral extraction and that. There was a lot more involved in mineral extraction and really they're not modifying that permit at all with this hearing, I just thought. Um, so tonight's hearing is only to recommend approval, if you guys so choose, language I recommend is for approval of. The temporary between this plant as the industrial use in short language.
So move, so move.
Excuse me, I'll second it.
Did you, did you make a motion?
I made the motion, he seconded.
Oh.
He, he made, the motion's already on the table, no, he's, he first made a motion, so we need a second. Jim was the first one in, so that'd be the second. That's okay with you, right?
Sure.
Yeah. So all those in favor of recommending approval of this permit to the county board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Curious. Thank you, so thanks for coming, yeah.
Guys, go on on this thing before a few blows up even.
Bring that up. Yeah. It was a good night till we got to that, huh? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Other business coming through this here? Is there anything new? I'm curious about the comprehensive land use plan.
Well, basically.
There you go. Yeah. So it's, it's underway. I think most of us would be interested in being involved in some.
It'd be good to have some of the old county commissioners. Cause they could tell you about problems that could have been solved. And they can get a lot better history on things too.
Yeah, as, you know, just as an example today, um, I had one where land use has. One like this, that, that actually has a hand that, that in theory.
Okay.
Not a big one, but. So, yeah, that's where, that's where we're at.
Well, at that point, let's have that motion adjourned then.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?